We're going to call the meeting of the City Council for January 17th order. And I'd like to note that all of our council members are present. And if you'll please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda, or next on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved in, seconded to approve the consent calendar, any discussion? Hearing none, all those signify support by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None? Order. Was that somebody back there?
Excellent.
We deal the same way sometimes.
Okay, we move to item number four and item A under four, which is recognitions and presentations. And we have a very special presentation tonight. And let me do this. We will be receiving tonight the final installment check of $10,000 from the Endashian LLC for honoring their pledge of $100,000, which all went to the Grove Park Fund. And at this time, I would like to invite Jack and Colleen McGuire to come forward, and we will make the presentation to them for their wonderful donation to the city and to the Grove Park. Mr. McGuire, who has worked with the city from 2004 to 2005 to purchase a vacant corner property from the Clayton Redevelopment Agency, and then subsequently leased it to Long's Drug, which is now the CVS Pharmacy, and other retail construction. Their family still holds title of the property, and it's now a very successful CVS Pharmacy store next to the Diamond Terrace. I'm going to come out here and make this presentation to them.
Come on up here.
To the front.
And then turn and face the audience.
Great.
David, how are you?
Good. Thank you very much. We have both Jack and his daughter, Colleen, here. And what we have is a wonderful portrait of the Grove Park. And you can see the children in there that are circling around here. And we want to present this to your family.
Thank you.
In appreciation for your generous donation of $100,000, which is quite a bit. And we're getting the last installment today of $10,000. Jack and Colleen.
Mayor's coming out hard.
Don't worry, we'll wait. Thank you, sir, thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you like to say a few words to it?
Certainly.
All right.
Would you turn the picture around so that the camera can see it? So the audience can see it.
There you go.
There you go.
Somebody said we started in '05 or '06?
It was earlier than that, I think it was '04.
It was about like that. I was coming out on a two-wheel vehicle at that time. And then I got down to where I had to ride a three-wheel vehicle. And you can see what I'm pushing today, so time's gotten by. We have been fooling around in real estate for over 60 years. And you've got memories. And this was a very pleasant memory for us.
Great.
Working with the city, with Gary, and with the council was a pleasure. And for those that have some curiosity, when we, the last day, the last night, when the gavel went down and they said, "It's been approved", the mayor then, I can't remember, but he said, "And what does Endashian mean?" And I said, "Well, my grandfather was from Minnesota, and there's an Ojibwe American native tribe there that he was quite fond of. And Endashian means the family." And I think that's kind of appropriate to go along with this, too. We enjoyed being here. We did go into the store today on the way up. And we think everything is quite well. They've done a good job. Thank you for your efforts, and we appreciate being here.
Well, thank you very much for your donation. We're going to get another photo here with this.
Take it away from the thing, there you go. Not in your pocket.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'm going to give this to our city manager so that, in full view of everybody.
In full view of the police chief.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you so much.
You switch checks, Mayor.
You have been so generous. We have to find another project for you to work on, Jack.
Mayor, if I may just...
Absolutely, go right ahead.
I do want to just say that this whole Long CVS, I still call it Long's. That means I'm an old timer. But I kind of got elected in a large part because of the whole issue with whether we should put a retail outlet there or put a gas station. And I remember being on the council after we had determined that it wasn't going to be a gas station, and going through all the permutations and working with Jack and his family. And it was really cool. And the generosity that they showed, and the ability, and the willingness to say, "Hey, we're going to contribute this to the Grove to make it work", was fantastic. And it is probably my biggest memory of my early years on the council. And just thank you for everything. It has turned out to be such a blessing to the community. And then with the senior housing going in right next to it, you can see just everybody going to get their medications and their supplies and everything. And it is perfect. It's a symbiotic relationship. It's fantastic. So thank you so much for everything.
Me too, forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to continue to move on now with some more recognitions. And we have some certificates for the public school students for exemplary, "Do the Right Thing". And this time, the area is kindness. This is for the months of November and December of 2016. And I'm going to ask the vice mayor to help me with this, so that I can get this done correctly. We're going to first do the, we have one for the elementary school. And we will have them come up. Let's see, who do we have first? Right there, from the elementary school.
Those are both middle schools.
Right. From Mount Diablo Elementary, Nathan Collier. And would you come up?
Mayor's a teacher here to help you?
They've got this down.
They do. And of course, this is a certificate of recognition that we want to present for doing the right thing, in this case kindness. And I'm going to ask you to make a couple of comments.
All right. Every morning, Nathan greets me with a great smile and a huge hug. He is kind to his classmates and is always the first to say sorry after a disagreement. He watches out for his friends, reminding them to grab their jackets and inviting more people to play. Nathan is always one to help up a friend who has fallen or gotten hurt. He is a kind student and a great addition to our class.
Very good, Nathan. Here's your certificate. And what we will do after we give out the ones for the middle schools, we'll bring all of the students back up, and we'll take a group photo that'll go into the newspaper. Okay. Do the Right Thing at the Diablo Middle School for Kindness. We first have Michael Cifrono. Is he here? There we go. And come around here, and let's hear some kind words about Michael and what he's done.
Michael is one of our eighth graders. And I have to say that I've known Michael for three years. And he is the most respectful, kind young man. He's always willing to help. His teachers appreciate him. His enthusiasm, his interest, he's very inquisitive, a great student. So when I was selecting students for kindness, Michael was one of the first that I thought of. He's a great young man, and I know he'll do wonderful in high school.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
From the middle school, we have Ava Dotson, who also is being recognized for her contribution for kindness.
So Ava is one of our seventh graders. And again, she is an excellent student. And one thing I know about Ava is that she is very supportive of her friends. She is always kind to them, includes them, and she just makes Diablo View a wonderful place, demonstrating her kindness and how we need to be respectful of our peers. So thank you, Ava, I appreciate it. One of the things I want to do is thank the City Council, because I do think this is a wonderful program that we both enlisted. And the way that you recognize the students for each character trait is really a special thing. So thank you.
Great. And I do want to make a comment that the program was actually started by former Mayor Hank Stratford, and is continuing on. If we get all of the children up now, we'll take a group photograph that'll go into the newspaper. And hold your certificates up so we can take a good look at them. And you? All right.
Look at the paparazzi. It's the paparazzi.
There you go. Put it down just a little so they can see your face.
We have, buddy, look up here. One more? Got it.
Thank you. Okay. Finally, we have another set of certificates to give out. Kelsey Thomas is a computer graphics and art and animation game design teacher at Clayton Valley Charter High School. And she was presented this project and selected two students who were willing to take on the challenge to develop the police department's trading cards, which we all have examples of right here. And not only that, but she came up with the idea for the Happy Holidays card from the police department as well. Janet will be, will have the envelope, will have an envelope for all of the City Council peoples that I should believe have now. And we will now present a certificate for both of the two contributors to this, both Grace Latin and the other one. Okay, and Katie Amos. So if they would come up, we'll give them a presentation. Okay, Kate and Grace. Okay, we'll get the chief of police to come up. It was a great design. The little cards are great. And I know that the police hand them out on a regular basis during the holiday season. They all got that Christmas card. Great. Okay. Any of the families want to take any more photographs? They can come on up there. Not, you're fine with them where you are. Okay. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say what a great idea that was that the chief had. And thanks to the high school for participating in the project. I think it just, one more example of how community is really wonderful here. And everybody participates. So, good job, everybody. Thank you.
And if you haven't seen them, we have them up here, and we'll let you take a look at them at your leisure. They're really wonderful. Okay, we're going to move into reports. And the first report is from the Planning Commission, but there was no meeting held. Trails and Landscape, no meeting as well. City manager and staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My understanding is if you would like a complete set of those trading cards, just speed through Clayton.
Somebody was doing that as I came in, and there were yellow and red, or blue and red lights flashing in the middle of Clayton Road.
The only item I have, excuse me, for you tonight is to let you know, although you're aware of it, is that we do have a vacancy on the Planning Commission. Apparently, former Commissioner Catalano was so excellent that no one wants to fill her seat. And so we did not get any applications. That could be a combination of the timing with the holiday seasons and people being attuned to family and other affairs. So by extension, we will extend that application period. People can go online to obtain an application. You can call our city clerk during business hours at City Hall. We invite people to get involved in their community. As you can see, this community is great to work with and for. And we will then hopefully have some candidates for your consideration at your next meeting, which will be on February 7th. And that's it, Mayor Diaz.
Thank you very much. And hopefully, anybody out there in the audience viewing this have an interest in assisting the city in the planning efforts. It's a wonderful experience. I think all of us on the council have all sat in that seat at one time or another. And it's a great part of the process in the city. We'll now move to City Council reports for those items where council members are liaisons to a number of regional committees, commissions, and so forth. And we'll begin with Vice Mayor Keith Hayden.
Weren't too many meetings over the holidays. Did attend a meeting last week, the Mayor's Conference in Danville. Had the pleasure of sitting in for the mayor and representing Clayton. Always a nice way to continue to expand our network and work with our neighboring cities and the councils. So that's a great way that we can take advantage of that. And it's a great venue. We meet every month to do that.
Great. Now, I want to thank the vice mayor for sitting in for me. I'm still recovering, but I appreciated the fact that he was able to step in for me.
Nothing to report.
Thank you.
So I attended the Successor Agency Oversight Board meeting last Thursday, January 12. So it was just a periodically scheduled meeting to approve the 2017-2018 ROPS payment schedule. And that was the same exact schedule that this council approved on December 20, when it convened as the successor agency. So that meeting took place. I also wanted to just note, I did attend last Friday, there was a community event, the Taste of Mount Diablo, which is a group of parents and volunteers who are doing a fundraiser to raise funds for the Mount Diablo School play fields. And they're doing a fundraiser to try to renovate those fields. Those are not city-owned fields. They are the Mount Diablo School District-owned fields. But there's a big effort to try to get those renovated. So there was one fundraising event. And if anyone wants any information on that, there's a Facebook site on that for MDES Playfield Project.
Great, thank you. Julie Pierce.
Yeah, I didn't have too many meetings over the holidays either, because I was in Iowa, where the temperature hovered around zero in the daytime and about minus 15 to minus 20 at night. And so I was happy to stay inside and look and take pictures from the inside of the warm house. But I was there for about three weeks, so I missed a good bit of the freezing weather here, but it wasn't quite as cold here as it was there. Although we did have one day back there that was warmer than Clayton, which was interesting. Since then, however, I have attended three Association of Bay Area Government meetings, two mornings of Metropolitan Transportation Committee, and one Bay Area Council Economic Institute meeting in Berkeley. And then had the pleasure of joining Keith at the Mayor's Conference. And it was a wonderful start to the year. So that's it.
Great, thank you. The couple of things that I did over the holidays included assisting with the tearing down of all of the Christmas decorations that the Clayton Business and Community Association puts up every November. Attended my usual planning, marketing, and planning meeting with the County Connection. That's one of the committees I sit on as a member of the Board of the County Connection. On the 7th, I attended the installation of the board and officers for the Contra Costa Association of Relinquents over at the Black Hawk Museum. Wonderful event. Lot of other local dignitaries and that were in attendance as well. Then, on last Saturday night, had the honor of making a presentation at the 38th Annual Shelley Awards. Now, this is a group, it's hard to believe it has been in existence for that many years, but there are a number of community theater groups, including the one from Clayton. All received recognition that evening for the great contributions they make to the performing arts. Wonderful night. And that's all I have to report. Okay, we'll move on to now public comments. And these are for items that are not on the agenda. And I have a couple of cards. So we will start off first with Don Weiss. Would you like to speak to us?
Yeah, I'm actually for Agenda Item 8. I believe I would have that on there. So it can wait until that Agenda Item comes up.
Okay, you want to speak on another item?
Correct.
Okay. And let's see, that's Jenna Famular.
I also would like to speak on 8A.
Okay, takes care of that. All right, we all, next item is number seven, public hearings are none. So now we'll move into the action items. The first is a presentation and discussion of the Contra Costa County's Community Choice Aggregation Technical Study findings and the range of further options for regional alternatives in electric power. And I'll turn it over to Community Director Mendigo. Would you please?
I'm actually going to be turning it over to Mr. Jason Crapo from Contra Costa County.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Do I need to press something for this to work?
No, it's fine.
It's working okay? All right. Well, I'm here this evening with Seth Baruch, who is a consultant to the county on this topic. My name is Jason Crapo. I'm a deputy director with the county's Department of Conservation and Development. And you might recall, I was here, I think it was in the early part of last year, to speak to you about this topic. And Seth and I are pleased to come back this evening to give you an update on the status of community choice energy within our county, and specifically the draft technical study that we'll be sharing some information about with you this evening. This draft technical study is a partnership between the county, the city of Clayton, and the 13 other cities and towns in Contra Costa County that are currently not participating in a community choice energy program. We have quite a few slides in this presentation. You'll probably be pleased to hear that we're not going to go over every single one of them in detail. But instead, we'll try to hit the highlights and move through this fairly quickly so we can get to your questions and comments at the end. We're happy to discuss any of the slides that you see up here in greater detail at the end of our presentation. So getting into our slides here, this first one is a quick summary of where we are and where we're heading with this project over the next few months. In the spring of 2016, the county and the 14 participating cities completed a memorandum of understanding to conduct a technical study of community choice energy. All 14 cities authorized the county to use their electrical load data in this study. And nine of the cities, including Clayton, agreed to contribute financially towards the cost of this study. Currently, county staff and our consulting team are providing informational presentations to city councils concerning the findings of this draft study. We also provided a presentation earlier today, in fact, to the Board of Supervisors. We're not asking you or the other elected bodies to make any decisions regarding implementation of the options discussed in this study at this time. Rather, the intent of this presentation and the other presentations we're making over the next few weeks is to provide opportunities for you and the other elected bodies, as well as the general public, to ask questions and seek additional information about this topic. In addition to presentations that we're making to the Board of Supervisors and city councils, we're also engaging in a variety of other outreach activities, including public workshops and meetings with interested community groups, as well as using means such as press releases and emails and the county website to get out information to the public about this topic. We are taking public comment on this draft technical study through the end of January. And then we'll be working with the consultants to finalize the study. And our intent is to come back to you and the Board of Supervisors and the other city councils in March and April to get direction from you on how you'd like to proceed on this topic, potentially to implement some of, one of the options that's considered in this draft technical study. Transitioning now into the content of the study itself. The scope of this study is to evaluate community choice energy compared to the current electricity service from PG&E on a number of important criteria, including electricity rates, greenhouse gas emissions, the development of local solar and other renewable energy generation within the county, as well as potential impacts on the local economy. In addition, this study compares three different community choice energy program alternatives to PG&E. First of those alternatives is to create a new joint powers authority that would be comprised of the county and interested cities within Contra Costa County. The second alternative would be to join the existing community choice energy program called MCE that was initiated in Marin County several years ago. And the third alternative is to join the recently created community choice energy program created in Alameda County that's called East Bay Community Energy. Now, I should point out that at the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning when we made this presentation, the Board of Supervisors indicated a strong preference for joining one of the existing programs rather than creating a new joint powers authority for this purpose. So when we go back to the Board of Supervisors in March or April, they've directed us to focus on the options of joining one of the two existing programs that I just mentioned. So I offered that as background as well for this presentation. So with that introduction, I'm going to ask Seth to come up to go through some of the highlights of this draft study.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. So I'm going to just talk briefly about the study itself and skip over most of the middle of the presentation, as Jason said, to save a little bit of time and get straight to your questions. But I will spend a little bit of time on the comparative analysis, one of the aspects of the study, looking at the different options that Contra Costa County and its jurisdictions could be exploring in terms of community choice. So with regard to the study, it looked at a range of different scenarios, but had the same basic underlying assumptions in terms of looking at the PG&E rates historically and forecast into the future, taking into account things like the Diablo Canyon nuclear plant closing. Looked at typical growth rates, so a community choice program has to serve its customers now into the future. So we need to know what electricity growth is likely to be over the next 10 or 15 years. And looking at the other CCs. Now, we have a number of community choice energy programs, including MCE and Sonoma Clean Power and others that are just starting out, like Peninsula Clean Energy in San Mateo County. So the study looked at those experiences as well and coming up with some of their conclusions. The main findings, as you can see here, what's nice for Contra Costa County, it does have a number of options. And we believe, based on the work that's been done and the experience that we've seen with other programs, that each of these options could result in lower greenhouse gas emissions. That is to say, a mix of electricity that is higher in renewable energy content and therefore lower in greenhouse gas content, as well as having a lot of that generation be potentially developed locally and therefore creating local economic opportunities. Most of these scenarios, the options that we've looked at, were lower in terms of electricity rates than PG&E. That is consistent with what we've seen with other community choice programs. For example, I mentioned the San Mateo Program, Peninsula Clean Energy. They just launched last October, and their rates are about 5% less than PG&E across the board. The study also looked at... The study also looked at a number of parcels of land and opportunities to look at developing local projects, many of those in the northern waterfront area, primarily solar, but there may be others as well. But whichever option, the county and its member jurisdictions were to go, there are trade-offs and pros and cons of each option, and so we want to lay some of those out so the elected officials can think about it and come to a conclusion about which option would be best for their city and their jurisdiction. So I'm going to skip over these slides and go straight to the, this slide. Okay, so as Jason mentioned, the Board of Supervisors seems to be at this moment not too inclined to explore or invest in the possibility of forming a new joint powers authority in Contra Costa County, so I'm going to spend less time on that option. And because typically, the way it's worked with these CCA programs is the county has taken the lead, that the cities don't really quite have, in most cases, not all cases, but in most cases, that don't have the resources or the wherewithal to invest in the consulting teams and all the other requirements needed to launch a program. So if the county is not inclined to go in that direction, that's, that's, that really says something in terms of having a program start here. So I'm going to just focus on the options that I think really are on the table, and that is joining MCE, joining EBCE, that's the Alameda Program, or doing nothing, because doing nothing is an option. And the criteria, as you can see there on the left, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, local control and governance, local economic benefits and startup costs, and the last one there, it's hard to see if that's a level of effort. So in a nutshell, I think that the advantages of joining MCE, it's an established program, it's a very well-regarded program, it was launched in 2010 and has now around seven years of experience in terms of delivering better, more cleaner energy, for most of its history at lower rates. And it's relatively straightforward to join. MCE has a lot of experience now in expanding to communities outside Marin County, including five jurisdictions in Contra Costa County. And there's been a push there also to develop local projects as well. I know we have some MCE staff here, and I'll let them explain what they're doing in that area. The other side of the coin with MCE is because it's an established program with a board, and a board that's been around for quite some time and has made decisions with regards to policies and programs that member jurisdictions from Contra Costa County, if they were to join MCE, would have perhaps less say in terms of what the direction, the overall direction of the program. I mentioned that really in terms of contrasting that with the Alameda Program, which has not really started yet, they're hoping to launch in October of this year, and they've just formed their JPA, their first meeting, their first JPA board meeting is going to be in a couple of weeks. And so this is an opportunity, I think, for jurisdictions that are interested in possibly creating a East Bay program. Obviously, there's a lot of affinity between, a lot of cooperation, historical cooperation between Contra Costa and Alameda Counties. The potential advantage of joining EBCE is that you're getting in on the ground floor with other jurisdictions that really have stated from the outset a strong preference to develop local projects and local programs really tailored towards Alameda County. So in terms of the, some of the key objectives there with regard to rates and greenhouse gas reduction potential, we see potential advantages, whichever option is selected, relative to the baseline of staying with PG&E. In terms of local control and local governance, I'll get into the voting shares in the next slide. But, you know, the decision, again, assuming that a Contra Costa-only community choice program is off the table, you know, you'll be sharing governance control and all that with other jurisdictions from other counties. Yeah, I think of, I should say that instead of startup costs, MCE is willing to include jurisdictions at no cost. EBCE has not made any such, any such decision. It's very likely that they would welcome Contra Costa cities without any fee or any other restrictions, but we don't know that quite yet. So the last slide, I just want to, I'll skip over here, because this is a question we get a lot. Again, I'll just focus on the, on the two options, joining MCE or EBCE. If you look there at the, if all Contra Costa cities were members of MCE, includes the five existing ones, with the MCE's voting structure, the Contra Costa communities would constitute 61% of the total voting power in MCE. With, compare that to East Bay Community Energy, that would be about 52%. So you're looking there at Contra Costa cities having a bigger share of the voting power in MCE than EBCE. And that's because, well, and I should say, there are two columns there with EBCE. One reflects the, sort of the first tier of voting power, which is a one-city-one vote. The vast majority of decisions from the other community choice programs that have this two-tiered voting structure is that most, like 99% of the decisions are made on sort of the one-city-one vote basis. But EBCE also does have a weighted vote, so if a couple of members say, well, we don't like the first vote, we want to call a voting, what they call voting shares vote, that is a vote based on the size of the load of each city. And because in Alameda, you've got Oakland and Fremont and Hayward, big cities, then if a vote taken on the voting shares vote basis would be reduced, the Contra Costa voting share to about 34%. So that's why you have that third column there. The largest single shareholder under each option would be the unincorporated county. That represents the largest load in the, single part, portion of load in the county. That would be about 8.1% in, in the MCE option, and about 8.4% in the weighted option for EBCE. Again, you can see there, it reflects the relative size to Oakland, which is the largest jurisdiction in the, in the, in the East Bay. So again, just some perspective there in terms of, again, a lot of local elected officials like to see, well, what, under each option, what's the voting, how would each option, what would be our share of the vote in terms of making decisions on the board? So I think those are the main slides I would want to cover, and Jason, if you want to...
You can just go over to 24, which is the risks.
This one, this one right there? Yeah. So, yeah, there are, I would not say the community choice energy is completely riskless. The programs to date have operated very successfully. But in terms of, if you're looking at joining a CCE program as opposed to just staying with PG&E, we do like to make sure people are aware that the, that there are certain risks, and I'm just going to focus on the, on the high ones. And that has to relate, that relates to policy uncertainty and legislative and regulatory uncertainty. So you'll see there, the infamous PCIA, or that's the departing load charge. That is a fee that all CCE customers pay to compensate PG&E for having gone out in previous years and procured power on behalf of CCE customers that are no longer PG&E customers. That's sort of like a stranded asset charge. That fee is calculated by a methodology that is something of a black box and is pretty volatile. So it's gone up a lot in the last couple of years. It's about 2.9 cents per kilowatt hour, which is, even with that, the CCAs are still lower than PG&E. But that is a risk in the future. There are, there have been a number of attempts, both on the regulatory level with the Public Utility Commission and at the legislative level, to change the law to make it harder for community choice programs to compete. So that is some of the high-level risks. There have been, I think now enough experience with, in terms of market procurement and raising the financing, that the, that's sort of the nuts and bolts of operating a CCA program are, the risks there are much more well-understood and able to be mitigated. But, yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm confused on this exit fee. If we joined a MCE or the other one, we'd pay an exit fee to PG&E?
Yeah, so...
One time, or is that a continuing?
It's ongoing for the period of the time that PG&E has procured power on your behalf. So as those contracts expire, the PCIA is, would in theory go down.
Okay.
But it is, it is not a one-time fee.
Okay, and so what, when you talk about that PG&E is procured for you for the future, are we talking 20 years, 30 years? Are they two-year contracts? What are we talking about?
So PG&E, like all the utilities and the CCA programs, have short-term, medium-term, and long-term contracts. So it depends on what the contract structure is for the power that comprises the CCE customers when they depart, but it's, I always think of it as a longer-term prospect, likely to go down over time, but let's say 10 or 15 years, something like that.
Okay, so we would be joining a program and still paying a 15 years or 20 years for a fee back to PG&E?
Yeah, I'm hesitant to say exactly how long it would be, but, but yeah, it's not, it's not one or two years.
And you said it was something like 2.9%?
It's, it's right now about, let's say around 3 cents per kilowatt hour. So if you look at your bill, you know, your probably average rate is anywhere like 14.
And who pays the exit fee?
The CCE customers pay the exit fee.
Okay, so for an average citizen, what does that work out to?
I want to say, the MCE people may, you know, answer it better than I would, but maybe it's like $5 or $10 per month on a bill, a typical homeowner's bill.
$5 to $10 a month for however long?
Yeah.
15, 20, 30, whatever?
Okay, I should say then, but again, even within, even with those fees, the CCAs have been able to have lower prices than PG&E to date, even with those fees.
Okay, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
No problem. And I think I've, yeah, pretty much covered this slide, so again, Jason, do you want to?
Sure.
Give us the last one?
Thank you, sure. So just to wrap up here, to tell you what our next steps are. We have more city council presentations scheduled over the coming weeks. Last week, we made presentations to three city councils. The Board of Supervisors today, of Martinez tomorrow, San Ramon, Pleasant Hill coming up. Antioch has recently expressed some interest in receiving a presentation. So we're doing this round of informational presentations, finalizing the study in February, and then coming back to the elected bodies in the March and April time period to seek direction on whether or not you're interested in pursuing any of the options that we've discussed. With that, that concludes our presentation, and we'd be very happy to entertain any more questions that you have.
And I know Councilmember Pierce and Vice Mayor also have questions, Joe Julie.
I do, and you skipped through these slides very quickly, but I actually had questions on many of these slides that I really need to get some clarification on. So on the slide that is, slide number three, the scope of the technical study, you say in that fourth bullet, identify sites for potential local solar development. Are you considering wind at all? I mean, we have a lot of wind in this county, we already have a lot of windmills out in the delta. I'm wondering if that's a potential source or if we're isolating it just to solar?
Yeah, sure, wind is definitely renewable energy, and it's just that, given the resources and budget that we had in this study, we focused our attention on solar.
Okay.
But certainly, other forms of renewable energy would be something that a community choice energy program would be interested in developing.
Okay, I was just wanting to make sure we weren't isolating it to just one clean energy source. You said that the Board of Supervisors today indicated their preference for joining an existing clean energy program. I would agree with that if we were to do that. When they expressed their preference for that, did they also express a preference for a clean energy program versus going with PG&E, or are they leaving that open?
There, it was really silent on that point, that was not explicitly discussed.
That makes a big difference for us in our consideration as we go forward, I appreciate that. And you mentioned that the Peninsula Clean Energy is a net about 5% less than PG&E. What is Marin Clean Energy, and maybe one of our other speakers will have that answer, but...
I think, I think the other speakers would be better equipped to answer that question.
That's fine, that's a question I have when they come up. I'm flipping through the slides because I have notes on many, many of them. It appears to me that as we compare on Slide 11, Marin Clean Energy and PG&E, both in the year 2015, and their, their sources of energy, it's, there is a significant, but not a huge difference in the renewable versus the, versus the fossil fuel type sources. So, and I don't know whether some of the newer clean energy programs have better ratios than that.
Yeah, so if you look at eligible renewable, that's wind, solar, geothermal, MCE is quite a bit higher than PG&E. Now PG&E does, as you can see there, have that large nuclear plant, which is greenhouse gas-free, although that plant will be shutting down in 2024 or so. So the, yeah, the greenhouse gas-free content is, doesn't look dramatically higher, but if you add that over, you know, many, many millions of kilowatt hours, it does add up in terms of net greenhouse gas reductions. In terms of other programs, I can tell you that Silicon Valley Clean Energy is preparing to launch with about 50% renewable and 50% hydropower. That would make it 100% greenhouse gas-free. And Peninsula Clean Energy, that's, that's for Santa Clara County. And PCE and San Mateo, they're, I believe their portfolio is going to be about 70% to 75% greenhouse gas-free.
And what is East Bay Clean Energy looking at?
Well, they, because they're so new, they haven't actually gone to market yet, so...
Well, they haven't, but they've expressed a preference, I believe.
They have expressed a preference, yeah, for, I'd say, at least 50% renewable, similar to the, to the other programs.
Okay, and talking with some of their board members on the Board of Supervisors in Alameda, I have heard a strong preference for a very high percentage of really renewable rather than fossil fuels. So I was wondering whether they had stated a policy on that yet.
Yeah, well, the first board meeting will be in a couple of weeks, and, you know, or the course of the next few months, I'm sure they'll be stating a policy. But the scenario that seemed to be of interest mostly to board, or future board members, was starting around 50% and then trying to get up to 80% renewable energy within, let's say, five to eight years.
Okay. On Slide 14, and on a later one as well, you mentioned the potential for creation of jobs, and I'm all about the northern waterfront and getting that project going, but my concern is how many potential jobs would be lost by PG&E by the addition of these other jobs? Is it an even swap? Is it, is it a net negative? What might it be? Do you have any idea? Did you look at that in your study?
So the technical study done by MRW did look at this, they did try to answer this question, and they came to the conclusion that there would be no significant or net reduction in PG&E jobs. Keep in, keep in mind that PG&E, particularly as it relates to community choice energy, they are, they're still very much a part of the mix. They deliver over their transmission lines, which require a lot of maintenance, the electricity generated from CCE programs. So is it possible that with so much, if, if community choice programs built enough of its own facilities, that there may be other power plants, likely to be fossil, that wouldn't be built as a result? It's possible, but a lot of those power plants are third-party power producers anyway and wouldn't be affecting PG&E jobs in that sense.
Okay, although the headlines would tell us that they've done some dramatic changes recently anyway, so what the cause of that is, we'll never hear from them, I'm sure. So on to, what I would say is a bit of a bogus claim that adding an additional clean energy program would create customer confusion within the county. That's on Slide 21. I would suggest to you that there's no more confusion doing that than there are having multiple cable or telephone networks. You know, it's a brand identifier-
Right.
...that people choose to subscribe to. So I think that's a bit of a weak argument personally. I would comment on the voting shares. Much as I like the idea of staying with the East Bay, I have a uncomfortable feeling that we would have even less influence there than we would, particularly knowing the cities that are involved. I can't imagine they're going to get away without having it be a weighted vote. I mean, just knowing the personalities of those communities, I can't believe for a minute that they will let that happen, but I could be surprised, and that would be wonderful.
I suppose, I mean, I can just, again, tell you from experience, that Sonoma Clean Power, for example, has a waiting system, and of the hundreds and hundreds of votes that have been taken, only one has actually gone to a voting shares vote, so.
That's good to hear. I'm not sure I would guarantee that, given the personalities involved, but okay, that's different. How big would the, you said 5% with a rate stabilization fund, and then you started to say that that's, what did you say, 5 cents per kilowatt or something?
I didn't talk about a rate stabilization fund. I talked about the PCIA, the Department-
PCIA, yeah, to account for that, and that exit fee is so much out of a total of, or percentage of what the total bill would be, or the average bill is-
Oh, I said, I think, $5 to $10 a month.
Okay. If I look at my average bill-
Don't quote him on that, because that's probably not a reliable number.
No, no, I understand, but the average PG&E electricity bill is?
Well, for electricity?
Well, that's what we have to look at, right?
Yeah, I mean, you get natural gas and electricity on the same bill. Don, what would you say is the average bill, $100?
Okay, so it's a 10% of the average bill?
Well, if it's $5, I said $5 to $10. Is that about 5 to 10%?
She's not even a lawyer on this council.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I've been thinking about this for a long time, and I'm starting to question whether it's worth the leap of faith. So, you know, the ability to beat PG&E's retail rates, I'm not overly convinced at this point. Okay, that was the end of my list for now. As I say, I'm skeptical so far. I'm waiting to be convinced.
Thank you. Keith?
Yes, I have a couple of questions as well. I've kind of held them off until you were finished with the presentation. Going back to Slide 18, where you're looking at the various options and the risks involved, and looking at the startup costs. Of the cost of starting our own energy option versus joining an existing one, you indicate in the startup cost that it's low but greater risk, and yet in the footnote, you indicate that the county and funding cities would likely to be reimbursed by the GPA. How likely is that reimbursement?
Well, so within the case of the other CCAs, and we can talk here from experience, that all the counties that have put up money have been reimbursed through program revenues, because, again, the amount of money that's required to start up, let's say it's a couple million dollars, is relatively small compared to, you know, the tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars in revenues that are generated by the CCA program. So the biggest risk really is if the county put out those funds and the program didn't launch. If the program's going to launch, they'll probably get paid back, because, again, it's a small amount of money relative to the revenues that are going to be coming in.
But you're saying the reimbursement comes from the program revenue itself?
That's right.
It's not a separate source than it's reimbursing. It's the revenue being generated by the program if it's launched successfully.
That's correct, yes. Now, we're talking here again, the contracosta-
Citizens.
The contracosta-only, right, okay.
Right, the revenue source being the electricity rates that are paid by electricity customers.
Right, just a little misleading the way it indicates it's going to be reimbursed from a separate fund that's actually reimbursed from the program revenue being generated.
Yeah, that really is the only revenue source for the program, is the ratepayer funds.
I understand, but as I say, the footnote could be a little clearer on that. Next page then talks about the risks involved, again, of creating our own separate agency, a commitment of substantial county and city resources to establish a new agency. That would be required, right? And that is the risk?
Yeah, so the county or someone would have to put up the money-
Right.
...to hire the lawyers and the consultants, and, you know, pay the various fees to get the program launched.
Right, right. And then, next goes to the, similar to what Julie had raised, the board voting shares on Page 22, and looking at contracosta total, and using the simple voting formula that apparently you're saying most people or most agencies are following, going, contracosta total would still result in a majority, that 52% versus going with the weighted.
That's right.
So my question was similar to Councilman Julie's question, about how likely it is that these much, much larger communities would allow the simple voting formula to be used. So it sounds like on your-
Speculative, I think. I mean, this was, of course, a big discussion in Alameda, where, you know, cities like Union City were worried about, you know, them being ganged up upon by Oakland and Hayward. And the only thing I can say on that, because I, you know, I can't predict the future, but I can just say that there seem to be very few decisions that CCAs typically have to make that break down along big-city, small-city lines. I mean, you're launching programs, you're buying power, you're signing contracts, you're hiring staff, you're hiring lawyers and vendors. I mean, it's not really a big-city, small-city thing. At least that's been the experience to date, so for what that's worth.
All right. That's it for now.
David, do you have another?
Yeah, a couple. Okay, so the MCE, you said, has been around since 2010. How big is that bureaucracy? How big is that JPA? How many employees?
30 people?
I can speak to that.
Yeah, she'll speak to it. There's a representative for MCE here.
All right. Then, when you go to the options and you talk about the rates, and you say likely lower, likely lower, likely lower, that was on Page 18. If MCE, and how long has EBCE been around?
It's going to launch in October, we think.
Okay, so, all right. So I get why you could say likely lower, but why, how come we can't say that MCE is definitely going to be lower?
Well, this is in part a look into the future, so we can say that MCE is lower now and has been lower for most of its history relative to PG&E, but I can't say necessarily we're raising it in three years, five years, 10 years. We can go based on CCE programs to date and what MRW has modeled for their forecast, and that's why we say likely lower, but we don't feel comfortable saying it's definitely going to be lower, because we don't know that.
Okay. And the JPA that is established, whether it be EBCE or MCE or own, that becomes something that the overhead and burden is passed on to the consumer in the bills, just like PG&E does and everything else?
Yeah, although the administrative side of the CCA programs is a very, very small percentage of the overall revenue base, revenue cost, costing expenses, so like, maybe it's like 3% or 4%, and these are small public agencies, so they don't have a huge staff or huge overhead.
What if you joined and you decided you didn't like it? Do you then have to pay an exit fee, and what is the scenario for that?
It hasn't happened yet, but yes, the answer is if a jurisdiction voted to join, and then however many years later decided they wanted to leave, there would likely be a cost associated with paying for the cost of power that may have to be sold into the market.
Same exit fee that PG&E's doing?
Similar, yeah.
Okay, so MCE has something already built into their commitment that addresses that?
Yeah, I'll let MCE address that.
Okay, so, yeah, I won't hound you on that. Did you guys ask any opposition groups that you were aware of about their thoughts and got their, you know, what are they going to be yelling at us for, and tried to address those? Like taxpayers' associations, anything, you know, against creating more bureaucracy?
Yeah, I mean, we've had a couple of public workshops through this process, and we'll continue to have them, and those are advertised, and Jason can comment on that. And so we've certainly invited participants to anyone who wanted to come and give comments, and we've had definitely a few skeptical comments at some of the public workshops we've had. So I don't think we've talked to, say, reached out directly to the Taxpayers Association, but we've certainly invited feedback and comments from the broader community.
Do you have any idea whether the Taxpayers, Contracosta Taxpayers Association is for or against this?
I don't know. Do you want to? I haven't.
Or whether they've even got it on their radar?
I haven't received anything from the Taxpayers Association.
All right, I'll stop grilling you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem.
I have just one question. I want to try to understand the timing a little bit. So you're hoping to come back to the cities and the Board of Supervisors in March, February for further direction and sort of decision?
March, April time period.
March, April, yeah. So with respect to the MCE, I guess five cities in the Contracosta County are already members of that. So when you say you're hoping to get a decision from the cities in March, April range, is that sort of, you're hoping to have every city make a decision at that point, or is there a potential that some cities will join in March, April, some will join a year later, or kind of what's the thinking there?
I think practically speaking, there'll be probably a range of decisions that are made. Hard to predict what that outcome will be. We'll just see what different councils decide to do this year and proceed from there.
But it won't be one-time lock-in either. In April, you're out.
That's correct, yeah. So with the option of creating a new JPA, that could be done at any time. MCE has an inclusion period open right now that they can speak to, but that's basically a period of time where they're accepting interest or applications, for lack of a better word, from interested jurisdictions that are interested in joining that program. East Bay Community Energy, because it is so new, does not have a process like that established. One of the actions or directions that the Board of Supervisors gave to staff this morning was to make a request to East Bay Community Energy that they specify what their terms of membership would be for interested jurisdictions outside of Alameda County. So our department will be making that request to East Bay Community Energy, but we probably won't have an answer from them until February at the earliest.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to kind of provide a summary here and see with Mr. Crepo whether I'm accurate or not. Now that the Board of Supervisors has essentially taken themselves out of the lead option, really what the county does is irrelevant or immaterial to the rest of the cities that have not joined a CCA.
That's right.
Because you have in your packet tonight, and I know that she's here, the CEO with MCE, the city of Clayton could decide all on its own to join the MCE or do nothing. So the fact that at one point in time where the county was kind of driving this as they remain an option, no longer is the key ingredient in this, is that correct?
I don't disagree with any of that.
Are you an attorney? That's-
Yes, would have worked. Okay, thank you, David. I suppose if the county went one direction, whether EBCE or MCE, you know, other cities may decide to follow that way.
Yeah, if there's that collegial feel, that if that's our county going that way, we ought to show some partnership in doing so. I guess the other question I would have, and maybe is for MCE, is there a certain threshold on these CCAs that, well, back up just a moment. The city of Clayton is the tiniest, you know, electrical load, you know, within the study area. So as I've expressed tonight, where we hook our caboose is kind of whatever train might be leaving the track. But is there a certain threshold of participation, for example, on that question? If Clayton were to go to MCE and join that program, and then 90% of the Claytonians opt out and stay with PG&E, does it make any difference to the CCA whether Clayton stays in or not? Because certainly our membership level and load level is immaterial, or the answer to that could be that once you're in, you're just part of a general population consideration? And I see MCE shaking their heads that that's the answer, so, okay. Great answer, thanks, Jason.
Thank you. I know we have a couple of cards here, and I know that, as the city manager mentioned, Don Weiss, who is the CEO of MCE, is here, as is Jennifer Familar, who's their Community Affairs Coordinator. Which one would like to go first? Don?
I'll go first, and then Jen, I can fill in anything I miss. It's really a pleasure to be here this evening, and I will keep my comments as brief as possible, and then I'm very happy to answer any questions that you all may have. I jotted down a few notes, and we'll try to respond to your questions after my comments. First of all, I want to acknowledge that it's difficult to compare an existing program to one that hasn't formed yet. So I realize that the presenters before me were in a bit of a difficult spot there, but I want to tell you a little bit about MCE that didn't really come through in the study. We are, currently, we are 75% greenhouse gas-free. Our rates tend, on average, to result in a lower cost for customers, and that includes all customers that we serve, residential, commercial, industrial, municipal. Our rates are typically very similar to PG&E, so there's not a big difference one way or the other, but if you go back over time, we have produced a significant rate savings to most of our customers. We also have a lot of programs to get local renewable development built in Contracosta County. We are very interested in the wind in your service territory or in your area. We're interested in solar opportunities as well, and what's important to us in getting local renewables built is not only that our energy is coming from the community that's using it, but also we're able to create a lot of jobs. And we've actually been able to quantify the number of jobs in California that we've created just in the last three years, over 2,000, 2,800 California jobs. 2,007 of those were union jobs and $1.2 million, $1.2 million union labor hours. In order to do our local development, we work with Richmond Built, Rising Sun Energy Center in the East Bay, to do our energy efficiency work, audits and retrofits. We do a lot of those in multifamily sector, but also in small commercial sector as well. We have a lot of small towns in other parts of our service territory, so we're very used to maintaining close connections to those communities and understanding what the needs are so that we can meet them with our solar programs and our energy efficiency programs. We also offer low-income solar rebates and have provided about 40 of those in the Contracosta community over the last few years, getting solar projects across the finish line that wouldn't otherwise get finished, because they're being done by low-income residents. And then I wanted to also note that our renewable energy portfolio is about twice as large as PG&E's, and we're doing that while keeping rates very competitive and affordable. We also have a high target for where our renewable energy content is going to go. Today, we offer a 50% renewable product and a 100% renewable product. In addition, we have a product called Local Soul, which is for customers that want their energy to come from a solar project within our service territory, and that's just now launching. So those are the three options that customers have. Customers can also choose to opt out of MCE, even if they're in one of our service areas, and they can get their generation from PG&E. It's easy to do that, you can do it with a quick phone call or going online, but if you don't choose to opt out, you're automatically getting greener power, and you're paying about the same or, in many cases, less. We will be 75% greenhouse gas-free this year, and that will be inching up incrementally till we hit 100% by 2025. We will also be 80% renewable by 2025. That's for our default product, so the goal is to keep our rates competitive while inching up towards that goal year over year. I also want to point out that the local economic savings and benefits that are outlined in this study are maybe likely, but so much of your rate structure is tied to the cost of power in the market, and there's a lot of volatility in the- And there's a lot of volatility in the market. We've been able to lock in costs since our launch in 2008, and we've been able to lock in power supply contracts that allow us to maintain price stability. I am hopeful that the new CCAs launching around the state will be able to take advantage of those same opportunities that we have. But I do think it's important to note that a bird in the hand is different than the alternative. And we do have an existing program with existing rates and without the uncertainty of launch costs and procurement costs for power. I wanted to also note that while our board did launch, it wasn't in 2010, it was actually in 2008 was when our organization formed, a lot of the really exciting decisions are just now starting to happen because it takes a lot of time to launch a program. You have to get, you have to get strong enough credit to be able to borrow money to build local renewable programs. And so, we make decisions on a monthly basis with our board on our integrated resource plan, our budget setting, and our rate-setting process is actually coming up this next month. And that's what our board is involved in. If the city of Clayton were to join MCE, you would be able to designate a board representative to sit on our board and come to our monthly board meetings, be part of our executive committee or technical committee, rate-setting committee, whatever you might have an interest in, and weigh in and have a lot of say on what happens. Right now, Walnut Creek is currently the largest, has the largest voting share in our community. It wasn't noted in the slides, but we also have weighted votes with MCE. Walnut Creek is the largest. Richmond is actually the second-largest, and our Richmond board representative has been our vice chair of our board for many years and is currently the chair of our executive committee. So, there's a lot of local control already being imposed, and we're excited to see that potentially further consolidated within the county. And then, I wanted to make sure that I responded to some of your questions. As far as the bureaucracy that MCE is, we're pretty lean and efficient. We have a staff of about 40, just slightly over 40. Administrative costs are between 3% and 5% of our overall budget. We bring in a lot of revenue from the California Public Utilities Commission to administer energy efficiency programs. We receive about $3 million a year, and we've just submitted a proposal today, actually, to increase that to $10 million a year. So, we're looking forward to bringing more energy efficiency into our service area. There was a question about local governments being able to opt out individually or how the exit fees are charged. And I wanted to explain that MCE sets its rates low enough to absorb those exit fees. So, when we talk about the cost being lower for customers, we're talking about after they pay the exit fee. So, I think that's important to note. MCE does not charge an exit fee for customers that opt out. If a local government like the city of Clayton were to join MCE and then decided that they did not want their load, their municipal load, to be served by MCE, they could opt out. Their customers would still have access to the program, but they could opt out, just like any customer. There is a one-time administrative fee of $25 for opting out after the enrollment period, but there's not an exit fee associated with that. However, in order for MCE to have low, stable rates, we do need to purchase power in long-term increments. So, if the city of Clayton were to join MCE, we would procure power on behalf of you and your customers going out 15, 20 years. And so, what that means is that making a decision to join MCE really is a long-term commitment. It's not the type of commitment that you can then, a few years later, decide you want to leave because there would be significant costs associated with that. So, it's an important decision. We're happy to spend a lot of time helping you think through it. There's a question about the Taxpayers Association, and I just want to point out that we have had some interface with Taxpayers Associations in other communities, and often there is a misunderstanding that community choice programs are tax-funded. And so, just to make it clear, if you do get questions along those lines, the Community Choice Energy Program is really redirecting an existing revenue stream that's in every community that's energy dollars. Right now, those dollars are flowing to PG&E for their generation costs. We would be redirecting those dollars into a locally-controlled program. It doesn't have any impact on taxpayers or taxes. And then, the last thing I wanted to say is just to make it clear that the inclusion period that our board has opened up here for all the cities within Contra Costa County is a defined six-month period, and I wanted to make sure that was clear since that really isn't the focus of this report. We sent a letter into your city in the late fall after our board opened up this inclusion period. It began in December and it ends in May. During that time period, the only communities that we would consider adding to MCE are the communities of, within Contra Costa County, including the city of Clayton. It's a free inclusion period, and the reason why is it makes it easy for us to do an analysis on adding the economic feasibility of adding communities when we do it at one time. And so, it helps us to have an inclusion period where we know if there's three, four communities that are interested in joining at one time, we can do that analysis in an efficient way. After that time, we may consider requests from Contra Costa communities, but there may be a cost associated with that, a small cost, probably $10,000 to $15,000 just to cover the economic analysis. But our board voted to have this inclusion period and offered to do the analysis for free if there are any cities that are interested in joining before the end of May. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions for her?
I don't think so.
David?
What is the percentage of those customers within MCE that are actually with MCE versus PG&E?
It is just over 80%. About 85% have chosen to stay with MCE.
Okay. Are there infrastructure improvements that are needed to switch over from PG&E to MCE?
No, actually. All of the transmission and distribution infrastructure continues to be handled by PG&E. PG&E continues to bill customers, and the T&amp;D charges show up on the bill, so customers are still paying directly for that. So, no, there aren't any infrastructure changes.
Okay. You mentioned that it is weighted votes, that it's not a 1-1, it's a weighted vote for all decisions?
Yes, it is a weighted vote for all decisions, and we have never had to take out the calculators, and we've never gotten to a point where we've had a split vote that gets us to that, having to kind of look at the load. But we do have weighted votes available at all our meetings so that we can use them if needed.
And you said Walnut Creek is the biggest weighted vote?
Correct.
What percentage is Walnut Creek of your current?
Walnut Creek is about 16%, I believe, currently. And one thing, I don't know if we can go back to that chart, but I think one thing that's worth noting is that the city of Oakland is showing up as being 16%, the largest community in the East Bay Community Energy Program. There are bigger cities in that program than in MCE. So, where you see the largest weighted vote with MCE is, would be the unincorporated Contra Costa County at 8.1%. There's no one bigger than that. I guess that's what I'm getting at. That's the biggest you got. So, we have smaller jurisdictions, and the unincorporated Contra Costa County would represent the largest weighted vote on our board.
Well, if, okay, if Walnut Creek is 16% weighted vote, then unincorporated can't be 8.1, so what is their weighted vote?
Well, that is a more watered-down version. So, that is assuming that we have all the communities in Contra Costa joining in. So, we would be adding 14 new communities, and that would diminish the percentages for every community.
Okay.
Concord would come in at the top, I would guess.
Yeah, that's right. Concord would be right there, right under the unincorporated.
Or probably bigger.
Maybe so, yeah.
Anything further? Not based on load. You mentioned that there are different programs. You can have 100% renewable energy. That obviously, well, not obviously, does that result in higher costs than PG&E, but that's a consumer choice to help the environment?
Beautifully stated. Yes, that's correct. It's about, it's a dollar more per kilowatt hour, which averages out to about $5 more per month for a residential customer.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. A penny more for a kilowatt hour. I said a dollar. I meant it.
Okay. You mentioned that 2,800 jobs in California through the MCE?
Yes.
Okay, and when you say through California, MCE, what region does MCE go from where to where?
Yeah, so we provide service in four counties only, all of Marin, all of Napa, parts of Solano County, parts of Contra Costa. However, we buy power outside of that region. We buy some within the region and some outside of the region. And I'll actually send around a little handout here that has a map showing you where all of our resources are, and then this actually has a laundry list of all of our resources stating where they're located. But we buy power throughout California. Some of our power even comes from outside of California, but not very much of it.
And is MCE buying the power from third parties as opposed to trying to create it themselves through bonds or their own money?
Yeah, we typically are buying power through power purchase agreements. These are long-term in many cases. We have power purchase agreements that run through 20, 25 years. For new renewable solar installations, we, those tend to be very long-term commitments. For conventional supply, those tend to be purchased in the market under shorter timelines, two to five years typically.
What's the longest contract you guys have?
25 years.
Okay. And is there, are there plans to actually create jobs or purchase and such create jobs within the counties that you're serving, or is it all being outsourced to Nevada or LA?
Well, we can create jobs without owning projects. We can create jobs by being the buyer. That's how projects get financed. They have to hand their PPA to the bank and say, "Look, we have a buyer for 20 years. Finance our project." And then, they hire the workers to get the project built. However, we do play a more hands-on approach to projects that are built within our county. For example, we have a feed-in tariff program that encourages local developers to build power and sell it to us at an above-market rate. They must use prevailing wage rates, and local, in many cases, we encourage them to use local hire. And that's where our Richmond Build connection comes in. We've actually been working with Richmond Build to train a large group of folks to build the MCE Solar One project, which is going to be the second-largest solar array in the Bay Area once it's completed. It's at Brownfield Site in Richmond. It's going to employ quite a few Richmond Build graduates. We have a local hire requirement in our contract that requires that at least 50% of the workforce come from the city of Richmond. And that's why we're doing a lot of training to get those folks ready to get it built. That will be built by the end of 2017, and that project has taken about three years to get permitted and get ready to construct. So, we played a very hands-on approach with that project, and we do intend to own it. Right now, the way that the federal tax credits are structured, it is more economic for a private company to construct a renewable project, pull the tax credits off, and then in about year six or seven, they can sell the project back to the public entity. That's typically the way that local governments are doing power development at this time. And so, we're following that same approach. But we do intend to own some projects once the tax credits have been monetized.
Okay, so when, so by 2025 or whatever, you want to own Richmond Build or whatever the program is?
Yes.
What is that going to entail in terms of, how is that going to be funded to buy that? And that's going to get passed on to the consumer, I assume?
Yeah, absolutely. And so, MCE has about a $200 million a year budget. We kick about 4% to reserves every year, so we're building up cash reserves that can help with purchases. We also have access to loans if we need it, but we currently don't have any debt. We have the ability to issue bonds, and so, when we get to ownership of assets, renewable assets, we're likely to issue bonds because we're able to borrow money at a competitive rate compared to private companies.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Jenna, are you going to offer something for us now? Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for letting Don speak for so long. It gave me the opportunity to not speak for very long. I just want to say that I, from the comments made tonight and speaking with people in the community, it sounds like there's a lot of concern about representation on a board of an existing program. And Clayton has indicated that they feel very small, but I do want to say that with the communities that we represent, five of them would actually be smaller than Clayton, so Clayton would be the sixth smallest. So, that would be two communities in Napa and three in Marin. So, you would be among a bunch of other people who are on a board of representatives who work together, as Don said, and make decisions together, and you would also not be the smallest group. So, that's all.
Thank you very much. We are in public comment at this time, and Jim Moita, are you going to speak on this item?
Mayor Diaz and members of the council, Jim Moita, 8117 Marsh Creek Road, Clayton, have wanted to be a resident for 23 years, but the county has blocked it with the urban limit line. I'm kind of a frustrated solar developer. I own a couple of self-storage facilities. I built one in Brentwood about, let's see, 12 years ago. It's ready for a megawatt of power. And, you know, in our society, to get financing, you need to have the right economics. And I've worked with PG&E since I built our facility, and it's very difficult. So, when you, as a, as a want-to-be developer of a, I mean, I have a 10KW system on my house, I have a 30KW system in Brentwood, we want to put a megawatt out there. Currently, you cannot sell power to PG&E. They open the door and they close the door, they make it. It's not very, it's not transparent. If you, anyone here wanted to sell power to MCE, you could go to their website, you could look at their purchase power agreement. It's 20 years. You can sign on the dotted line if you can provide the power, and you can do that. You can't do that with our incumbent utility that has been a monopoly for 112 years. So, you have an entity that's our incumbent, which is completely controlling the system, and it's very difficult. And you, as the city leaders, I think you'll see if people do join it, 85% stay with their system, which is transparent, they don't have a lot of overhead, and I think that most people, you know, you were all elected officials by the community of Clayton, and you do a good job, you research, you do your homework. If you had 85% of the people vote for you, that's pretty good. So, they have 85% of the people that have the choice to leave that stay with them. That's a statement in its own. In relation to the prices that PG&E will pay right now, I have been talking with them for four years on our project in Brentwood, which is ready right now for a megawatt. So, it's about 4,400 panels. They are not accepting applications right now. So, they play this game where you, as a developer, approach them, and they say, "Yes, we want to do it," and it's a reverse auction, it's a very convoluted, it's just not straightforward. And so, it makes it very difficult. But currently, their purchase price for clean power right now is between $4 and $0.06. It's very nebulous. They won't give you any contracts that they've used with anybody else because there's a privacy issue. MCE will give you that contract, it's online right now. MCE will pay you 11 and 1/2 cents today. That's what they'll do. So, it's very clear, if you have a megawatt, that's about, you know, you can sell it, you can go to a bank and get a loan to do it. So, you have an incumbent that doesn't do that. It makes it very difficult. So, I'm just saying, the choice is, for me, very clear that you give your citizens that opportunity to make that choice. Do you have any questions? I mean, I've been working with PG&E for a while. To give you an example, just a short example. So, two years ago, I was building this last building, and I had given it to PG&E, and they had gone through, so you have to put a transformer, we had a transformer for a facility, they wanted to put a pad and they wanted to size it, and they wanted to put conduit in between, there's like five lines, five-inch lines. They approved the plan, and then 18 months later, I went to build the building, they said... the plan. And then 18 months later, I went to build the building. They said, your plan's not approved. And I said, but you designed the plan and you, here's the approved plan. Well, we have to go back and redesign it. That's frustrating. When you have a loan in place, you borrowed money, you're going to build this building. So it held us back about 18 months. But we did build the building. We're ready to go right now, but they're not accepting applications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is public comment section. If anyone else was to speak on this item, please come forward and tell us your name.
Hi, my name is Dora Solur. I'm a Clayton resident. And I have some questions with regard to putting solar on our residential houses. If we were to join Marin Clean Energy or one of the other CCAs, would you be able to get net metering on your, excuse me, solar system if you were to do that? And also, I have a question with regard to the power that's purchased by the CCAs. Are they purchasing simply the renewable energy credits? Or are they purchasing the power and wheeling it through PG&E territory to the actual location where it's used? Thank you.
Thank you. Would you, before you leave, fill out one of these cards so I can give it to the city clerk to, they're back on the table there, so we'll have a record. Thank you.
Who wants to come up and answer those rooms?
Happy to. So, yes, we do have a net energy metering program. The only difference between our program and PG&E's is that we pay more and we allow customers to cash out at the end of a year if they've generated more energy than they've used during that year. This year, or last year, MCE paid its own net energy metering customers over a million dollars for the surplus energy that they got onto the grid on behalf of our customers. This included cities, schools, businesses, nonprofits. And there's no extra forms to fill out. So if you're a net energy metering customer with PG&E and we initiate service in your community, you automatically become a NEMs customer of MCE. And then as far as, are we purchasing actual energy or just wheeling energy credits? We are purchasing actual energy. We, the list that I handed to the clerk to pass around lists the actual locations of the facilities we're buying power from. There is a small percentage of our energy every year that is bought in the form of renewable energy credits. That's 0 to 3%. The reason we need to have that flexibility in there is because you never know exactly how much load, how much load your customers are going to be using in the course of a year until the year is over. And so it's important to have a little bit of flexibility there. The 0 to 3% is, is part of the California Renewable Portfolio Standard for Renewable Energy Credits. And so we just stick to that minimum. But the remainder of all of our energy is bundled, actual renewable energy with the green attributes that go with it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address this item?
Just wanted to follow up on that also. So in our small system we built 12 years ago, and the incumbent utility was the power provider. We built 1,000 units. And so we put this system in, and we had a credit of like $2,500 at the first, at the end of the 12 months. That went to zero, which is different than what MCE is talking about. Then we started again and we had a credit of like 1,200. It went to zero. So PG&E doesn't provide you a payment for any excess, any excess electrons used systems, sent through the system. So I'm just saying that this, this other opportunity is well worth considering. Thank you.
Thank you again. All right. If no one else is going to address us on this item, we're going to close the public comment and bring it back to the council so that we can provide any preliminary policy indications to the staff. Anything for this item? Nothing. Yes?
I would just comment. I'm really curious to see a little more dollars and cents written down. I'd, I'd like to see a little more sort of hard something. This is a little squishy yet for me. It might be, it's about, there've got to be some case studies. There've got to be some case studies that I'd like to see. And so I don't know whether the information that will be passed out by the clerk is, has some of that in it or not. But if you could give us some places to go and look stuff up and read then some things. These are big decisions, and I'm not willing to make that kind of a decision on what I've heard tonight. I like the concept a lot. I've always been big on the concept. I know when, when Marin County was battling with PG&E, I, I served on A-BAG at the time with some of the folks leading that charge. And I heard the, the gory stories about what they went through. And I realized that it's not nearly so gory anymore for, for new folks in the market, although it's still not easy. But I still need a little more nuts and bolts of how this works before I can make a recommendation on behalf of our community. So, so by the time we all get back together again, I'd like to have a little more information. Thanks.
And we're not expected to take any further action on this until we get closer to that March-April timeframe. Is that correct?
You are not compelled to act tonight.
Okay.
Jim?
Go ahead.
Building on what Julie just indicated, I think it'd be helpful if we had examples of existing customers and the success that they've enjoyed after implementing this option, and how well it's been received in their area, and how well it's working. I think that'd be helpful as examples.
Can I ask the city clerk to email, scan and email these out? There are not enough here for all of us.
We kept wanting to do that.
Did you do that? I would appreciate that. And I'll wait until tomorrow. I won't have time to read it overnight.
So have we provided at least the kind of input that you're looking for at this point? Basically, what it sounds like we're going to do is wait for more, more information and then formulate an opinion down the.
Well, you certainly will have the opportunity to provide input to the county
Yeah.
and in their timeframe. Recognize as well that tonight's presentation was largely presented by the county. As, you know, she indicated, Dawn indicated, that a letter was sent out. She was polite in saying that it was sent out to city managers, but it's in the agenda packet. And so you have that, and you have that information, at least knowing what their timetable or schedule is. Now, I would imagine if you, as a legislative body, felt that you would like to hear more just specifically from MCE and address some of those other questions, I can't imagine that Dawn would shake her head no and not come back at a separate meeting to give you further understanding of how they operate and whatnot, because that's an individual decision. That's yours. They're, they're basically inviting the city of Clayton to join them and are saying that we can do so, and the timeframe is to the end of May 31st, so they can begin to do analysis on the total electrical load. So that could be an option, Mr. Mayor.
Any comment on that?
You don't want to hear it again.
No. Okay, that concludes this item on item 8A. And before I move to item 8B, I want to back up. We did get a late card from one of the representatives from the Contra Costa Fire District. Robert Letzo, would you like to address us on?
Good evening. Thanks for squeezing me in here. Sorry about the card. I wasn't sure where to drop it. I'm just here to introduce myself. I'm a new battalion chief with the Contra Costa County Fire, and I'm going to be representing the city of Clayton moving forward. So I'm a new face, and I'm a new face. With that being said, I've also worked at Station 22 for multiple years during the time which Station 11 was shuttered. And so I was the guy that would drive back and forth every day and open up Station 11 for a certain amount of hours. And so I got to know the city of Clayton during that time. So I'm not exactly new to this place. I understand what goes on around here and how things, how things work in the city. So I enjoy it, and I enjoyed my time here. And we were part of a lot of good things as far as parades, and of course, the Art and Wine Festival, that's always a good time, and, and all the good things that happen here in the city of Clayton. So I just wanted to give you an update that I'm the new guy, and I'm going to pass out my business card to you, and you feel free to contact me at any time. I'll be the liaison as far as the fire department goes. I grew up in a small town in Sacramento County, so I know what it's like to have a one firehouse in, in the city, and what that means to the city and how that feels. So it's not, doesn't fall light on my shoulders. I understand what it's about. So I'm happy to be here to represent us. So Station 11's been open full-time now for two years, as of yesterday, full-time again. And so we're proud to say that. In 2016, just to give you a year, and we ran approximately 358 calls for service just out of Station 11 here. And that just means that Station 11 was first due on 358 calls. They went to other calls in other jurisdictions, and we had other fire engines that would come in here while Engine 11 was busy that weren't counted in those numbers. So our average response time was five minutes and two seconds, which is pretty good. We continue to be an all-risk fire service. We're here operating 24/7, 365 now. We provide all risk, which means structure fires, wildland fires, EMS, vehicle accidents, rope rescues, water rescues, which we recently had, and any hazardous materials incident that happens here. We start the process as far as that goes as well. Some of the good things that also happen near here to the city of Clayton that we provide for your residents and the people that come and visit are responses to the mountain. We've spent many, many hours up there helping people that have been in hiking accidents, or horse-riding accidents, or bicycling accidents. Myself, this last summer, I don't know how many times I was up there helping out. So we provide that service. We also are, in conjunction with the county sheriff's office, now provide a helicopter service. And so that service is Tuesdays through Saturdays, from noon to dark for firefighting. So we have a bucket that hangs below the helicopter that'll give us some initial knockdown on any wildland fires that are around. And it's a 144-gallon bucket. So that's a pretty good help for us. We also, the helicopter operates until 11 o'clock at night in case of a search. So they have FLIR technology in which they can get up in the air and basically see any heat signatures that come from the ground. So that's awesome when we have somebody that's lost at night on the mountain. It helps us in other capacities, too, to find fires that are hidden that we can't exactly see or just smoke things like that. But it's been, it's been really good for us to use them. That helicopter's staffed, obviously, by a pilot. They also have a tactical officer from the sheriff's department that flies on there, and, and they have a captain paramedic. So that paramedic has been a part of many, many rescues since that program started. I, myself, have been to some of those here at, here at this mountain, as well as Brionis, in which the helicopter will fly over in a place that we can't reach, single track, that type of thing. Will drop this, this paramedic into the scene. He will package the patient, give them any immediate need that needs to happen for them, package them back up, hook them to the helicopter, and haul them over to a landing zone for the ambulance to pick up. So it's a great resource. If you don't have that, basically, we're up there footin'. It takes us a long time to get to the patient, and a lot of things can happen over time. So it's a great resource, and it benefits the city of Clayton and their people. Station 87 opened two weeks ago in the city of Pittsburgh. That sounds like it doesn't mean anything to the city of Clayton, but it does as far as mutual aid goes for us. So in the past, when there's been a big fire in Pittsburgh or Antioch, our resources will move over there. Sometimes it was from the city of Clayton, which would leave you guys, you know, uncovered at times. And we shutter our rigs around to help, you know, protect everyone. But with that being said, Station 87 opening is just on the other side of the hill on Bailey Road. And so when there's an incident or two in the city of Clayton, that rig can move over and cover and, and, and provide response over here. So that's my whole spiel. I won't take up any more of your time. I just want to introduce myself. I'll leave you my business cards. Feel free to contact me if anything that goes on. Use our resource, and I look forward to hearing from you.
Well, this, thank you very much for coming out. This council and this community is very well aware of Station 11, and we keep a close eye of what's going on over there. By the way, did you have any issues during the last storm that, no, I know that we had some issues out on Marsh Creek Road heading out towards the Brentwood area.
Yeah, absolutely. So we, I can't say for sure exactly what happened in the city of Clayton during that time, but I did respond out to the water rescue out on Morgan Territory Road, in which I drove from Lafayette at another meeting I was at during that height of that storm, out to Marsh, out to Marsh Creek Road, and it was fairly significant. So I actually was the one that shut down the road right as we, you know, when it first shut down, because I was driving through and we had landslides just coming down left and right. And I was like, we don't want anybody else getting swept off the road here. So it was, it was a big, big night, and a lot going on, so.
Yes.
Yeah, just a couple of things. So are you going to be the one that sends us our updates on significant incidents?
I'm the guy.
All right, all right. I can put a face to that when I read those emails. And I will be calling you about 4th of July. We'll be counting on you.
That sounds great.
I'm sure you'll be a partner. And before that, it'll be the Art and Wine Festival
Oh, yeah.
on the 29th and 30th of April.
Oh, I hope I'm working. I'll have to check.
All right. We love seeing you out at our events.
That's right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to item 8B, which is Consider a Resolution Approving and Establishing City Policy on the policy, excuse me, the Property Assessed Clean Energy or PACE Program for cities, for our cities' affordable housing units. And we'll turn it back over to Mindy Jen.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This item on the agenda is to discuss establishing a policy on the city's affordable housing units as it pertains to the PACE program. The purpose of the policy is to establish guidelines for affordable housing homeowner participation in the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, which is also known as PACE, involving deed-restricted units that have a city resale restriction agreement recorded on the property. The intent of this policy is to alleviate concerns regarding the protection of the city's investment and not losing an affordable housing unit while also continuing the city's support of the PACE program. These concerns also include overextending the property owner and putting a lien on the property that exceeds the property owner's equity in the property's financial resources. Just a little bit of a background on the PACE program. It allows residential and commercial property owners located within a participating district to finance up to 100% of energy efficiency, water efficiency, and renewable energy projects with little or no upfront costs, and pay it off over time as a voluntary property tax assessment through their existing property tax bill. This issue was initially brought to the city's attention when one of the property owners of one of the city's affordable units requested to participate in the PACE program to make energy efficiency upgrades to her home. In this particular case, the city has a second mortgage in place on the property, and the resale restriction agreement for this property states that an owner is in default if a lien is recorded against the property other than the lien of a bona fide first mortgage. So given this language within the resale restriction agreement and the structure of the PACE program, the PACE financing would actually place the property owner in default of the resale restriction agreement by placing an assessment lien in a higher priority than the first mortgage loan. The procedures governing this policy would require the property owner to seek city review and approval of participation within the PACE program. And this would require the property owner to submit a letter of request along with pertinent information in order to determine if the property owner would be eligible to participate in this program while also still protecting the city's financial interest. Approval of the financing would then only occur if the property owner is able to meet the criteria that's outlined in the policy. After this completion of the staff report, there was actually a public comment that was received. It's printed out and located on the dais. It pertains to an article in the Wall Street Journal, kind of highlighting some of the concerns of the PACE program. I just wanted to make the council aware of that. However, it's recommended that the city council adopt a resolution outlining the policies and procedures for the PACE program as it pertains to the deed-restricted affordable housing units. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Jim? Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, so under this, if they have enough equity, they have 80,000 in equity, and they want to do 50,000, we're fine. But if the economy tanks, values go down, what happens? Are we subordinated to that lien?
Yes, essentially, the PACE program is a tax assessment and actually even takes a higher position than the primary mortgage.
Then why would we ever want to do that? That's a rhetorical question to the council. Sorry, not to you, Mindy. Okay, I don't have any other questions. That answers the other one. I have some comments. But if anybody else had questions.
I think Keith does.
As I read through here, it looked as though this is the city's response to protect the affordable housing and permit affordable housing owners to participate in the PACE program.
That's correct.
And provide additional protection to the city.
Correct. To basically vet out whether or not there's enough equity and enough, you know, debt-to-income ratio in order to secure the city's investment within those properties and make, and try to protect from default as much as possible, or, you know, foreclosure on the property.
And I suspect Mala has looked at this, and this appears to be our best alternative available right now.
Correct. We drafted it.
Best alternative is nothing.
If you want to allow people to participate.
Julie?
Yeah, I don't have a problem allowing this, I don't think. But my, my.
But my concern is it is rewarding commercial businesses and excluding other options. And I'm speaking about one that, as the president of ABAG, I have to say, I think is important that our property owners also know about the services offered through ABAG, through our local collaboration program, which is called Bayren, which gives discounts and rebates on all kinds of energy upgrades and things like that. And they also offer financing. And since we already belong to the JPA, which is ABAG, I would think that all of our residents would not have a problem going through that as well. And it's not subject to income necessarily. So, there are lots of different programs. Some of them, for instance, the water savings one for replacing toilets and low-flow fixtures and even replacing lawns and things like that is actually billed on your water bill. And so, there are quite a few of these programs, and I just think it would be advisable for us to give our residents who want to make any of these kinds of improvements, whether it's insulation or new windows or roofs and water savings and all those kinds of things, the option that we have a local agency here in the Bay Area who does that professionally. And I just, I think that would be really advisable.
If I could, I think what I'm hearing is that, from that comment, it's you don't want to restrict the policy just to PACE financing programs, but to allow other programs the opportunity. Not that we are going to get into the marketing, because we don't do PACE marketing right now, and we wouldn't be doing ABAG marketing.
No, but I do.
But only we would allow that vehicle to be placed upon that affordable housing unit.
Right, but to the extent that we acknowledge that PACE exists and that HERO exists, we ought to advise people that Bayren exists as a resource as well.
Yeah, again, I'm dealing with policy versus marketing. We don't get on the phone when people say, oh, by the way, you know, there's A, B, C, and D that takes place.
Jim? Yes? Yes, sir.
This is stupid. Our affordable housing program has been one nightmare after another about finding too late that we screwed up. And we didn't do this, we didn't protect that. There is absolutely nothing that suggests that we have to put this program or allow this program in place. We have limited numbers of affordable housing units. They are always at risk to being lost to us, either through our actions when they sell, and we decide we don't want to keep it in our stock or whatever. But this is a risk that we cannot place any guarantees on, because these, by definition, are your higher-risk homeowners than, you know, the vast majority of the rest of Clayton. And we're giving them an opportunity, but then we are saying, oh, well, if you have equity of, and we all know how fast equity can collapse, and having $50,000 equity now and putting $50,000 in, and then boom, it goes down, and the City of Clayton is SOL again. For the 20 or so, how many houses do we have in our program now, Gary?
I think there's about 20.
About, yeah, about 20.
Yeah, 2021.
Okay.
Not all located in that one subdivision.
It not only adds costs and nightmare to staff to deal with it, but it's a risk that I'm not willing to take, and I'll vote absolutely against this, because, sorry, it's just not, it doesn't work. We all read, hopefully, all read the Wall Street Journal thing. That should raise some red flags that may or may not be true. Proper, you know, programs can do that. But from my standpoint, the risk assessment is obvious that this is not something we should, we should do or condone.
Jim?
Yes?
I would just suggest that, and I agree with David, the vast majority of our low-income housing is in the form of rental units, where this would not apply anyway. So, there really are not very many.
No.
No, they're property homeownership.
By definition, there can't be rentals, so, right?
Well, all of Diamond Terrace counts, and it's all rental.
Okay, Diamond, okay, I was thinking of Stranahan and West.
And we have, we have the.
But, yeah, but Diamond Terrace is not an individual unit. It's one big building.
Right.
And I'm not sure, well, I think it's risky. I'm concerned about that. There are other programs out there.
Nothing for you? Keith, anything further?
No questions. We're bringing it back to.
All right, well, this is a public comment item, so we will open it for public input at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on it, please come forward. Say no, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council for further discussion. Action or non-action?
Procedurally, do we move to take no action? Or do we just don't do anything?
No, that would be the status, right now, the status quo is we would not allow that because of the restrictions. So, this would allow that vehicle to be open. So, if you take no action, then the Item 8C would come up.
Let me ask you a question of Mindy. The item under our housing element says that we will explore. Does this count as having explored? I don't want to be in violation of our housing element.
The city has already explored and already opted into three different PACE programs.
Right.
So, we have fulfilled that exploration by opting in.
Do we have?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
All right? Yes.
I mean, I certainly like the idea of having a PACE program or having that kind of option, but certainly, hearing the fact that the type of lien that it is, that it takes essentially precedence, that it's not, you know, that definitely is concerning to me as well. So, I do share that concern.
Great.
Yeah, and that's the only one where we actually have the mortgage that should be in first position.
All right, moving on. Item 8C, move on. Consider Report on the Likely Construction and Operation Maintenance Costs and Possible Site Locations for the City's Construction of Possible Second Public Restroom in the Clayton Town Center area. Assistant to the City Manager Hoffmeister.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members and members of the public. I have provided with you, and it was in your packet, a pretty detailed report. I thought what I'd do is take a PowerPoint here to kind of summarize the information. As you recall, there was a meeting that the city council had asked staff to go and take a look at the possibility and what the options would be in terms of adding more additional permanent toilet facilities in the Grove Park or the Grove Park area, i.e. the Corral or the Black Diamond Plaza right across the way of the Grove Park. As you know, currently, I think some of this was generated because of the concerts that are held during the spring/summer season, early fall, approximately 10 concerts every other Saturday after Art and Wine Weekend are held. And there are a large number of crowds that do attend that, and at times, the restroom lines can be long for periods of time within that three-hour window that the concert is held. To help assist in that, Allied Services, Republic Services, has provided two portable toilets that are installed and placed over at the Corral to try to provide another option for patrons that would wish to utilize those facilities. So, currently, we do have four permanent toilets in the downtown Grove Park, built with the Grove Park approximately nine, almost 10 years ago now. We have two stalls in the women's restroom, one handicapped and one standard, and the men's restroom is one stall and one urinal. We have the two additional portable toilets during the concerts at Black Diamond Corral, and that provides a total of six toilets during that concert season. We did some research, did some research to find out what is the recommended industry standards for a venue when you have a large crowd of people. For a concert event that is approximately three to four hours in length, which is approximately what the attendance time period is for our Grove Park concerts, the recommended industry standards are for 250 to 500 attendees, you would have four to six toilets, which is what we have right now. Our concerts tend to yield between 1,000, maybe as much as 2,000. It varies depending upon the concerts and who you ask that's doing the head count, but somewhere in that approximate range, certainly about 1,000 and probably closer to 1,500, 1,200. So, you'd be looking at seven to eight toilets or nine to 14 toilets for 2,000 attendees. And we've had some pretty packed concerts with Diamond Dave and some others that probably yield an audience size of that or slightly more. So, that would be what you would ideally have as an industry standard. A building size to house an eight-toilet configuration, which would be double the current size of the current bathroom building. So, you would need a 22-by-40-foot area for the building and another 10 feet in front of the building for the walkway pad and the gathering space or the line or that area. And if you wanted to accommodate 14 toilets, which would be, again, around that 2,000 concert attendees, you would be looking at triple the current size of the building, which would be 22 feet by 60 feet. The Grove Park annual restroom maintenance cost is approximately $18,900 per year. And the breakout on that is the janitor's costs are about $12,000 for cleaning and maintenance. We have about $1,400 in supplies. That would be your toilet paper, paper products, and soap. Electricity is about $500, and water is about $5,000. Under either scenario, if you were to go for doubling the bathroom or tripling the bathroom, if you doubled it, you would have to add approximately maybe another $18,900 in new annual estimated cost. So, that'd be $37,800. Again, if you tripled the bathroom, you would add another $18,900 to that. There may be some economies on scales for the janitor, but it gives you a ballpark idea. So, we, I evaluated some options, and one was installing a second restroom at the Corral over where the gravel area is, where the two portable toilets are currently placed during the concert season, expand the existing restroom building or rebuilding it with the larger building in the Grove Park, or renting luxury portable toilets during the concert season. And the reason I put up Item C, there's been some anecdotal information, some comments I've heard by attendees, that they tend to shy away from the standard portable toilets. They prefer something a little bit nicer, a little bit not as a temporary facility as those portable toilets are. This gives you an overview of the park up at the top. That's the existing restroom building. And what I did was the blue area below would be as if you doubled the size of the bathroom. That's how far out it would extend into the park. And that gave you, I think it was the six to eight toilets, or approximately the eight toilets. And then if you were to go out even further into the park to do what the maximum industry standard was, or the industry standard for a larger concert venue of attendees of 2,000, the bathroom building would be extended all the way out and include both the, all the way out to the red box. So, that's how much area you would be looking at in occupying the Grove Park property. Looking across the street at the Corral, did some preliminary research out there and found that we have a major sewer trunk line that comes through bisects this property. It used to be the old right-of-way. Was in the center of the street at one time, but the street was moved when all the improvements were done downtown. So, that yellow line represents the edge of the easement line. That's as close that you could go to build is a 10-foot easement from the edge of that 18-inch sewer line. And the yellow line adjacent to Old Marsh Creek Road is the approximate location of the PG&E utility easement. So, inciting a building that would be consistent with the current building in the Grove Park, which would allow for the four toilet facilities, two for men's and two for women, the building envelope would encroach into the sewer easement. Even configuring it the long way, you still have the same problem. So, there's some constraints there. Kind of recapping here, the building there would have to be approximately 20 by 22 feet. That's approximate size of the current bathroom. The 10-foot main sewer line crosses the site. That requires a 10-foot setback. You have the utilities across the front edge, which require a 5-foot setback from the utilities, which are actually located slightly behind the split-rail fence. That easement area is behind the split-rail fence. We did not have a chance in that there, but we do know that there's probably other utilities in the area, such as water lines and drainage lines that are not readily identifiable on the field as possibly, as well as some site electrical lines where we have for our lamp posts that are in the plaza. So, the developable areas I mentioned appears to be about 15 by 10 feet, which is too small to accommodate a restroom building that would provide four additional toilet facilities. If it was possible to accommodate a building at that site and the easements weren't constraining, you would be looking at approximately $250,000 to $350,000 for some sort of, probably a prefab building that could be placed on a foundation, including all necessary site work. One of the things that has to happen is the manhole there that's right in the concrete at the edge of the curvature of the plaza is approximately 12 to 14 feet deep, and it would have to be reconfigured to accommodate a sewer line connection. So, that adds some additional cost to the site. If the council was interested in further exploring this site, it would require a site survey to obtain actual information about all of the utilities in the area and some other site information, and that would be estimated at about $3,000. And then this, again, is just a close-up view of the information here with the sewer line. That's the easement line, and the sewer line kind of runs right parallel to it 10 feet away. We look, I looked at another option, which was expanding the existing restroom building by adding four or eight additional toilets, which would yield a total of eight to 12 on the site. It would be either prefabricated, the current prefabricated building and its foundation does not appear to accommodate an expansion due to the location of the electrical and plumbing that's existing inside the building. It's all located in areas that would have to be completely redone. It's unclear in talking to the prefabricated company that these are site-specific or, they're modular buildings that are uniquely designed in terms of specific specifications. They would need to come out into the field, pay for their costs to come out, and assess the situation to see whether or not that particular module and how the electrical and plumbing were put in could be modified and that building expanded. Some other constraints is that if it could be done, we would need to do a new foundation, reconstruct the existing plumbing electrical, modify the walls, relocate a path, the bench, the picnic table, at least one picnic table, two lamp posts, drainage and irrigation electrical, remove some, one second more tree and some other vegetation, redo the drainage as well as a water line and the tanks that are on the back of the building that we added to provide better toilet flow into this last concert season. They would need to be enlarged, and there's probably going to be a new water meter needed. We'd have to upsize the water line. That water line also, and the sewer line, go through the totlot and the resilient surface area and underlying drainage in that area. So, if we were to further pursue this, we would need to be going back through an area that was just rehabilitated and redone not too long ago. And I don't have those costs included in this, so there would be additional cost. If it is possible to accommodate an expansion of the existing building, we would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 to $350,000 just for the building and site area, not including any of the water meters or the upgrades or changes to the pipe connections that would go through the totlot area. If it was to be double that size for eight additional toilets, the estimate would be running between $400,000 and $500,000. And further exploration of this option is estimated at about $22,000, which would cover a site survey work of about $7,000, and a construction engineer and restroom company technical representative to come out and give additional assessment information, and that's estimated about $15,000. They would, their services would need to be engaged. And again, this is just a close-up view of what I just went over. Again, the blue area would be enlarging the existing building up to that point, and that would give you about four additional toilets. If you extended all the way out, the blue and the red together from the existing building, that would yield eight additional toilets for a total of 12. And Option B, too, was to remove and replace the existing restroom building with the new building with either the eight or the 10 toilets total, same as what the addition was. Again, same considerations. However, you'd have the demolition of the existing building costs. However, you'd have the demolition of the existing building costs that would need to be added in. And so the rough estimate for this particular option would be between $300 and $450,000 and $500,000 if you're looking at demoing the existing building and building one large building that would accommodate 12 toilets. Again, these options, this option and those figures do not include some of the costs that might be associated with a water meter increase and some of the cost through the tot lot area and redoing the tot lot back to its original condition if we had to go in and replace the lines. Again, the same option. If the council was interested in further exploration, would be about $22,000, and that would provide, again, site survey work of $7,000, and the technical components that would need to be engaged of a construction engineer and the restroom company of about $15,000. And you can see side by side the two options of doubling the current size of the bathroom building. The blue would be the existing bathroom plus the expanded area, and how much area that that kind of takes into the park. And this other option here would be taking it up to the 12 restrooms total. And let me just go back to this one just for a quick second. One of the things that's of note is that this area of green in front of the building, you would have to add some space in there, and probably on both sides of it would be hardscape and concrete to allow for the pedestrian traffic that now circulates in front of the restroom building to circulate in front of any expanded or rebuilt restroom building. And then the last option that I put up here is Option C, which is what was, was to, the cost be if you wanted to rent luxury portable toilets during the 10 concerts? I think some of us have seen these or other people have seen these sometimes at event venues where they have a trailer that comes out, and they're a little nicer. They're not just the little plastic toilet that you walk into. A seven-toilet luxury option would provide three urinals for the men with one stall, and then three stalls for the women, and include stainless steel sinks. That would bring the total number of restrooms at the site area for 211, and it would accommodate the crowds and offer enhanced facility over the two portable toilets that are currently in place at the Corral. Something like this could be placed either possibly in the parking spaces along the park, or it would still fit over in the Corral because it is temporary. And the size of this building, one is it would not adversely affect the easements. It would stay within the easements. It could be paid for by the concert accounts, and the estimated cost per year would be $30,000 a year. At $30,000 per year, it would take approximately 10 years of usage to get to the same point of even the cheapest cost a permanent expansion would yield that I'd gone over in the first couple of options. Again, this is a different type of luxury toilet company, but at very similar configurations where you have a men's and a women's doorway entries, and then you've got the stall urinals. In the women's, you have three private stalls, regular sinks, hand washing sinks and stations. This particular unit would not require any modification to the Corral. We have a 20-amp circuit there. It requires access to a water hose bib connection, which we do have at the Corral. It comes with its own onsite waste tank of 200, 600 gallons. It would allow for about 1,200 uses before needing to be resurfaced, and it needs about 200 gallons of fresh water. What the company typically does is they come out and they empty it all, but they refill it with your own water supply. So they're not bringing out clean water for it. They're just using existing water supply. So there might be some added cost for the water meter at that particular location for that unit. So at that point, that concludes my presentation on a few options that we've looked at for your consideration and direction as to what you would like to do about the Grove Park restrooms.
Great. Any questions? Yes, sir.
If we just closed off the road to get to the Corral on those, on those two sides and added a couple more portables, how much is that going to cost us in police or, you know, time to close off and then the extra toilets?
I'm sorry, where, where with the portable toilets? You said close off the-
There's two at the Corral now.
Correct.
We put four over there.
We could, we could accommodate four. We could accommodate six or eight over there.
We could, we could put a bunch more portable toilets. I think the problem is, is people don't like crossing that street during, when it's actually open, and that-
Oh, I understand.
And that's, I think we might be creating a dangerous condition. But we could close off that street right on the two corners and, and leave that open, right? And that's really a minimal cost for our police services to do that, right?
I'd have to have the police department look at it. Typically, what they've identified is because of the traffic coming down here, the preferred location to close the street has always been up at Clayton Road with the hard closure there, so you don't get somebody inadvertently coming into the crowd through a closure. And that easily diverts the traffic out and around versus having them, if you closed it here, they'd have to make the right turn to come down Main Street, adding to the congestion downtown, and that way they'd go back and around.
Okay, I, I don't, that's fine. I, I'm just saying that that, we currently don't close off the street.
That's correct.
And so I think the former mayor's concerns, I think your very thorough report makes it very clear that we're not going to be adding a permanent, at least from my standpoint, but it, to address the concerns we had for the 10 concerts or 14 concerts we had, you know, he was talking about CBCA and funding for that. I mean, it seems to me that that's a heck of a lot cheaper alternative that may accomplish what he wanted and what we all may want, you know, if the concerts continue to be so highly successful. So that, that was my question and my kind of comment thrown in there that I think obviously this is-
From a staff perspective, we do not know if the disinclination to use those portables is related to the number, or they don't like crossing the street. I, you know, so we could certainly put more portable toilets out there. I don't think that necessarily is going to solve the concern about the lines at the Grove Park restroom. But I think those of you that are more intimately familiar with the concerts-
With restrooms?
Well, we, we've often talked to the staff, you know, potties are us, but maybe Council Member Pierce has some thoughts.
Well, let me just say, as the one who has probably the closest interaction with the folks using the restrooms during a concert, for a variety of reasons, whether it's resupplying toilet paper or doing the plumbing work itself, I don't think it has anything to do with the number of toilets that we have as portables. They just don't like portables, period. Now, whether they'd like the luxury ones or not, I don't know. They're, most people are not willing to go to what they think is the backside of the concert. They would rather wait in that line than cross the street. I don't think it has anything to do with the traffic on the street. I think it's a purely psychological aversion to what they consider more like an outhouse. And, and it's just that. They turn their noses up at it, and they don't want to go. There are more men than women who use them, probably for understandable reasons. But I will tell you that, you know, given the repairs that have been done by our staff the last, what, did we have three concerts? Two or three, at least, after the repairs were done and they were actually functioning The lines were significantly shorter. People were not complaining. Things were working, and mostly the line, unless somebody's desperate, and then people will let them in ahead of them, they're generally a party atmosphere, and people are patient because they can still hear and see the concert. So I think the fact that they're actually functioning properly now, and we've not had any further incidents even during Oktoberfest, when we had a big crowd, we didn't have a problem during Labor Day Derby with them. At least, nobody called me with them, and I would have heard about it, I'm sure, because there's an awful lot of folks who have called me in the past when there were issues with the toilets. Two previous Oktoberfests, I got-
So we all in agreement? We don't need to proceed any further on this?
We don't, we don't need to go any further unless there's something really strange that happens this next summer, and we'll just have to observe.
I just want to add, I wanted to thank you for a very thorough analysis for overkill solutions to a problem that exists very rarely just during the concerts. And I tend to agree that the long line do become a social event. The only-
A midgity social event.
I did see one potential solution that you could not maybe check into, and that's a smaller luxury portables. I saw the very large portable that was suggested, but that is temporary in nature, much more appropriate for the short-term problem that exists. But we might want to just delay this until we look at how the new toilet system is working and, again, gauge the reaction of the crowd, but certainly nowhere near in approval of permanent expansion of the existing facilities. And just see if anything, just an expansion of the temporaries.
And you are correct, Vice Mayor. I did put the seven up there because that was the maximum, but there are the two units configurations of the luxury a little bit up there.
And if it's the toilets themselves that's a problem, we could, I think, improve that.
Which would be cheaper.
And the only experience I ever had with those luxury was at the Concord Pavilion, and they brought them in for a special event, and they were really very plush and would be a good alternative, but again, the cost would have to be absorbed by the, the concert master, so.
One other comment, so I, and I think I know the answer to this, but so the existing bathrooms we have there, I assume that they're sort of optimally configured so that you, for ADA and building co-regulations, you couldn't add more stalls to them or anything?
Right. Not to be, yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we close the public comment, and we bring it back to us. And it appears, just based upon the general discussion, that we are not going to take anything further. We're going to wait and see until after the next concert season.
Thank you, Laura.
Thanks, Laura.
Or stay like that.
Right, right. Okay.
Thanks, Laura.
A B, let's see, discussion to determine the date, time, and location for the city council's annual goals and objective setting session with the city manager. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Hopefully, this will have action associated with it. We meet annually in a goal-setting session. Typically, in the years past, the city councils like to meet before a council meeting. However, there have been occasions when a separate meeting has been set. They're usually held over in City Hall, which allows us to engage in what the progress is of the last session's goals and those going forward. We've included in the agenda packet the months of January and February in terms of dates that are possible, and of course, we can talk about March if you wish to do so. So we're here, Mr. Mayor, to receive an agreeable date from the council as to which time and day of the week you'd like to hold that.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Council members, what was your pleasure on this?
Let's do it before tonight's meeting.
What? It's on the calendar, right?
Looks good on my calendar.
Consider it done.
I would, I would suggest before the next council meeting works for me, or we have a fifth Tuesday this month.
I would prefer the seventh to do it the next one. My schedule, I've got two trials coming up and the end of February, early March, and so I might miss a meeting or two anyway. The seventh is doable.
Would work better for me as well.
So would you think 4:30 or 5:00?
I, I think it's more of those who have to drive.
5:00?
5:00?
We, I mean, we were done, I think we started at 5:00 last time, didn't we?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, it worked last time.
Can you get back that early?
Last time, we started at 4:30, but I think we were completed well before the 7:00 meeting. So I think two hours is plenty enough time, yeah.
Okay. The- If you're running the city so well, it's hard to come up with things. We can continue to shorten. By the time I'm done, we'll probably have a 10-minute meeting.
I will bring a Nerf dartboard.
No, the seventh is fine with me. Tula, how's that?
That would be fine.
Okay, so.
So we need a motion to set a special meeting on February 7th in third-floor conference room of City Hall at 5:00.
Do you want any public comment on this at this time?
No, I don't care what anyone says.
I second that. Still moved, I second.
Okay, moved and seconded, absent public comment, and all those signify supporters saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Seventh it is.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, before, before you go on, I just did want to make something for the record. During the discussion we had about the PACE program, I made some strong comments about whether the program was appropriate. I did actually catch Mindy as she was walking out. I didn't want her to think that I was saying that the reporter or the, you know, proposal was stupid. Staff continues to do a great job of bringing things to us for policy decisions. From my standpoint, the statements I made were about the policy. Staff did a great job, and I just wanted Gary and staff to understand that I was not saying, boy, this is stupid that it was brought to us. It was appropriately brought to us, and we took appropriate action in my regard. So I just wanted to make that clear to staff.
Would agree 100%.
Good recovery.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Council items, anything limited to future meetings? Anybody have anything? Nope, that takes care of that. We will now go into closed session, and that's per Government Code Section 54956.8, conference with real property negotiator for 6005 Main Street. Instructions to the city negotiators, council members, Pierce and Shuey, and Ed Del Bacaro, Managing Director, Transwestern, concerning price and terms of payment. We now go into closed session.